All right. We'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lafayette Public Utilities Authority. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for any LPA members that may have any announcements. None? Seeing none? I'd like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and that blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. And the five-minute rule is in effect. I would like to get a motion and a second to introduce these ordinances in Globo. A motion by Mr. Nakka, a second by Mr. Bertrand. And could you read the ordinances, please?
(inaudible) Public Utilities Authority amending the fiscal year 11-12 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates. Ordinance for 2012 LPUA and ordinance the Lafayette Public Utilities Authority amending the fiscal year 11-12 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to adjust amounts for risk management uninsured loss reimbursements to actual.
Thank you. Any discussion by any members? Seeing none, Anne, could you call for the vote, please?
District three?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
Approved.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. (inaudible) I'd like to call the meeting to order. The pledge of allegiance will be by Councilman Partain.
Father God, we want to say, God, that we thank you. Thank you for allowing us to assemble here today, God. God, we actually pray, God, that you would be in the midst of our decision-making, God, God our mind and our thoughts, God, that we may make the right decision as it pertains to the business of this great parish. God, we thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you to the Lafayette City Parish Council meeting. We, as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government, welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. This meeting is a public hearing. If you wish to address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out a blue request to address the council form noting the agenda item number. The blue form is available to you in the foyer and you should submit it to the council clerk, Ms. Norma Dugah, who is seated to my left. It is important to fill the blue form completely and note the specific agenda item number about which you wish to speak. If the card is not completely filled out and it is not legible to the clerk, you will not be given the opportunity to speak. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule is in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating, personal attacks, and from making confrontational and derogatory comments. I am requesting that the first row to my left be used for media only. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium, and all pages and phones shall be silenced from this point forward. Meeting procedures are by resolutions, not by Robert's Rules of Order. I have received no indication that any introductory ordinances are to be pulled for discussion and separate vote from the in-Globo list, or any indication of amendments that will be offered for any of the agenda items. Chair announcements. Budget hearings will continue on Thursday, September 6 at 1:00 p.m. This hearing will be the wrap-up for the 12-13 budget. Item number five, Resolution 043-2012, will be deferred. The public hearing was not able to be held due to the hurricane. Council announcements. Seeing none, Executive Prejudice Report, Mr. Stanley.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule is in effect. Anne, please read the resolution.
Resolution 44-2012, a resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the filing of an application with the State of Louisiana Office of Community Development for a local government assistance program grant for the Milton Water System.
I need a motion and a second. A motion by Councilman Andy Nakka. A second by Councilman Bertrand. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dugah, any blue cards?
No, sir.
Anne, please call for the vote.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Stained.
Approved. Resolution 45-2012, a resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council acknowledging receipt of and approving certain financial reports for fiscal year 12-13 as submitted by Acadiana Open Channel Incorporated.
I need a motion and a second. A motion by Councilman Bertrand. A second by Councilman Castillo. Councilman Terrio.
Ms. Toops, if I may ask a question, I've noticed in here that an allocation of $517,000 from the cable franchise fees are allocated to AOC on here. Is that normal protocol there? Is there some, I guess, do we have an ordinance that stipulates that that has to be done? That's, Mr. Stanley, if you want to jump in, please?
Yes, and it's in your agreement with the providers. Franchise fee is paid by Cox, is also paid by LUS Fiber, and AOC uses those funds to operate, not the least of which is to pay rent for the facilities at Rosa Parks that were recently constructed.
Okay. So there is an obligation there to give the 517 to AOC?
Yes, there is.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dugah, any blue cards?
No, sir.
Anne, please call for the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Approved. Resolution 46-2012, a resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish President to execute an extension of the contract between Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and BFI Waste Services LLC doing business as Allied Waste Services of Acadiana, providing for collection and disposal of residential solid waste.
I need a motion and a second. A motion by Councilman Bertrand.
Second.
A second by Councilman Boudreau. Councilman Shelvin.
I'd like to call for a question on this particular item, please.
Councilman Shelvin's called for the question. Mr. Abear?
I think if, we need to, on this particular matter, since it calls for a vote, there's a provision in the sunshine law that would require that if there are public comments, if we have blue cards, that we at least allow some of those blue cards because the statute says, we don't necessarily need to allow them all because it's subject to reasonable restrictions that the council can place on them, but if we happen to have some blue cards, I don't think we can just call the question right away without having the opportunity for some public comment.
When did we start that?
It's a state statute that was passed in 2010.
I understand, but we've always called for the question regardless of blue cards. So this is something new?
No. No, it's not. It's been around since, I think.
I know that law has been around, but status quo, since I've been on the council, we've called for the question?
I think it was right at the very beginning. You bet it, and you called for the question. I don't think we've done it that way.
Yes, we have done it without blue cards, without any blue cards. Yes, we have.
I stand corrected, but since I've been here, I don't think that's been done. I know the one time it was done where you allowed public comment at introduction on a matter that you did not allow public comment.
I don't have a problem with.
And that, to me, was fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with blue cards, but we have done it particularly recently because my constituent, Mr. Brasso, even walked up and said, "I didn't get a chance to speak. What's this called for, the question?", and we hadn't had blue cards yet.
I think that was the matter. I'm talking about where, I think, comment was allowed at intro, but not, but y'all decided not to do it at final.
We've always killed all discussion, even with blue cards. We've done it while you were sat there, Mike. I don't know why you don't remember that.
I know that one instance that we're talking about, but again, I thought that was okay because that was one where we called out the ordinance at intro and had allowed public comment at intro.
Do we have blue cards? Okay, that's fine. So, Mr. Abear, you're suggesting that we go to blue cards?
Yes, sir.
All right.
That's a law.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Shelvin, we will, it's up to you if you still want to have your call for the question after we go to blue cards.
Yes, sir.
Based on Mr. Abear's opinion. Ms. Dugah, blue cards, please.
Stephanie Skinner. Hi. I'm not going to be long. I just want to know how many jobs were lost in the whole new garbage trucks. I just want to know, how many jobs are lost?
How many?
Anybody know? Yeah, how many men were lost when we brought in the new trucks?
You would have to contact, and I can give you the numbers afterwards. Us as a council do not have that number. Mr. Stanley?
The answer's zero. The contract for automated waste has been around for five years. Renewing it will not cost jobs, and allied repurpose those drivers who were available at the time when the routes were done with manpower. But allied, that question came up, as I recall, during the debate when they proposed to convert to automated waste, and allied pledged at that time that there would be zero jobs lost as a result of the conversion. Bobby Guidry is here and may be able to verify that. Bobby? Zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dugah, any other speakers?
No, sir.
Councilman Bertrand, what we did here was we took blue cards, and now Mr. Shelvin has called for the question. Ms., the reason why the question was called by Councilman Shelvin, if that is defeated, then we'll allow the council to discuss. I'm basing this off of legal counsel, Mr. Abear. Hang on, Mr. Bertrand. Councilman Shelvin, you have the floor.
I would draw my call.
Councilman Bertrand.
I just wanted to add to the comment to the lady who raised the question about jobs lost. Obviously, there were no jobs lost, but one of the problems, one of the reasons we went to automation was because we had trouble finding people to do the job to begin with. That was one of the aspects of it, anyway. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Bertrand. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Anne, can you please call for the vote?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
No.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Approved.
We will now move to final ordinances by the council. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule will be in effect. Anne, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 172-2012, an ordinance the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to donate 23,45 Scott Air Packs and 42 SCI 60-minute cylinders, which are surplus movable property no longer needed by the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government for public purposes, to the Lafayette Parish Sheriff's Crime Scene Division in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 38:2319.21, air packs and cylinders.
I have a motion by Councilman Boudreau, a second by Councilman Bertrand. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dugah, any blue cards?
No, sir.
Anne, please call for the vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Approved.
Ordinance 183-2012, an ordinance the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at 106 Collins Drive, Carron Crow, Louisiana, owned by Larry Rader, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
A motion by Councilman Boudreau. A second by Councilman Terrio. Mr. Viatar?
The pictures y'all have were taken this morning. As you can see, it's a fire-damaged house, and we recommend it be condemned.
Ms. Dugah, any blue cards?
Stephanie Skinner. I just want to know if the owner's okay. I mean, if everything's fine with the owner? And why is houses being condemned? Just out of curiosity. Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you'd mind, go back to the mic. Mr. Viatar, can you just please briefly give her the reason for condemnation and how we notify the property owners, please?
We had the complaint back in November of 2010. The owner hasn't really done anything. Spoke to him this morning. He was supposed to be here at the council meeting, so I don't know what happened.
Okay. Is the owner present? Is not, and you did talk to him this morning, so the owner has been notified? Thank you, sir. Ms. Dugah? Excuse me, sir. We're right now on an ordinance for 106 Collins Drive. Do you happen to be the owner?
Yes, sir, that's mine.
Okay. Would you mind, would you like to speak?
Yes.
This podium right here, please?
One in the middle.
On the end.
Okay. Good evening.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Larry Rader. I own some property located at 106 Collins Drive in Carron Crow, Louisiana. I think the house caught on fire, I think about maybe a year or so ago. One of the neighbors behind the house set the house on fire after we had remodeled it. And we're in the process of selling that property. I did bring the individual that's interested in purchasing the property with me. We've already started legal proceedings so that the property can be transferred into that particular person's name. She has already contacted someone to do the work for her. So as soon as the property is placed in her name, then work on that property will begin, and hopefully it'll be in better shape, or I know it will be probably be in better shape than what it was in prior to the loss. So we're going to ask the council for a little bit more time and just be a little bit patient with us, give us a little bit more time so that we could get those things done that we've already started. And I guess if anyone has any questions for me, I'll be willing to take questions at this time.
Councilman Partain?
Do you have a contract, sir?
Not at this time, no. I don't have a contract because I'm no longer going to be the owner of the home. I'm going to sell it.
You have a contract to sell it.
I have the buyer right here with me.
But y'all don't have a contract yet.
Well, we have a verbal contract that she's going to buy it. We haven't, I know the attorney is working on the paperwork and getting the paperwork drawn up, and that should be done within this week or early part of next week. But we didn't physically, you know, draw out a contract saying that she was going to buy the home.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Bertrand?
How soon do you think that's going to take place?
I think it's going to take place very, very soon, Councilman Bertrand. I think within the next couple of months, it should be done.
Well, may I ask specifically when it's going to be done?
I spoke with her, the guy that she's working with, today, and I asked him that question, and he told me if they started on it this week, by next week, they'll have the house, the roof, which is, I think, the major concern. It will be completed by then. Our problem right now is just getting the attorney to draw up the paperwork, and I could give you his name and number so you could verify whether or not it's being done or not.
No, the problem we're having here is that we do this because things sit for a number of years and become a hazard.
Yes, sir. I understand.
And then sometimes people come at the last minute with all the good intentions in the world, but then they don't follow up.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm being real specific about when is it going to happen? Because even if you have, Randy, tell him how much time he has to work with you and how he can work with you.
Well, according to the ordinance, he has 30 days to do the bond and then 90 days for the repairs. It just depends if the council wants to give him more time.
Well, I'll leave that up to the council. What I'm hoping that you will demonstrate to the council is more than just good faith because it's been two years since anything was done. So that's all the questions I had. Thanks.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, would you like to add anything else, sir?
Well, I guess I should start by apologizing for being late. This 5 o'clock traffic is extremely bad coming towards Lafayette. But go back to Councilman Bertrand, I understand, you know, how frustrating it could be when people come up here and they say they're going to do something, and they don't actually follow through. But I think in this particular situation, it will get done. It will get done, especially now that we've got a buyer and she's got someone to do the work. It will get done, and it's going to get done fairly quickly. So we're going to ask the council to please give us that opportunity to do the work rather than tearing it down, give us the opportunity to get the work done, and I think the neighborhood is going to look a lot better with a beautiful structure there than just an empty slab sitting there.
Hang on, one question, Councilman Terrio.
I think Mr. Viatar had mentioned, you said it was going to be 30 days and then for the bond, and then you have 90 days afterwards to complete the work.
At the current ordinance, states that, yes.
Mr. Collins, I'm sorry, sir, is there a possibility that you can get this done in that timeframe? Even if this council approves this, you still have 30 days plus 90 days.
I think so, yeah. I think so, but I think based on the information that.
Hang on, one second. Our legal attorney, Mr. Abear?
One slight clarification, it's 15 days to produce the bond, not 30. Under the ordinance, as written, it's 15 days to produce the bond and then 90 days to repair.
Okay. Okay. Which means if you get this agreement in place, get a contract, and then you still have the 90 days.
Okay.
So even if the council approves it, you're still going to have that timeframe, and I'm sure Mr. Viatar would be more than happy to work with you within those parameters.
Yes, sir. Mr. Terrio, Mr. Viatar has been very kind in working with us through this process. I guess if anyone has dropped the ball, I guess to some degree I have because, you know, the type of work that I do, I've been extremely busy. But nonetheless, that's not an excuse, and it won't be an excuse because we're not coming back over here again telling you we need more time. We're going to get it done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anne, please call for the vote.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
No.
District seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Approved.
Ordinance 186-2012, an ordinance the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish President to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Lafayette Parish School Board to provide for additional school resource officers in Lafayette Parish Public Schools and to amend the fiscal year 11-12 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the receipt of additional revenues in the amount of $38,400 received from the Lafayette Parish School Board for this fiscal year, with the remainder of the contract to be funded in the fiscal year 12-13 operating budget.
A motion by Councilman Bertrand. Second by Councilman Castillo. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dugah, any blue cards?
Stephanie Skinner. Um, my question on this one is how many more resource officers are they going to add to the schools? Anyone know?
This is a school board question.
Jim will answer.
The number of officers is dependent upon the different programs established in the schools. This is the first year that we add officers. In the past few years, we've stayed at six. We added an additional two because of the reorganization of the school system and the establishment of the school at the old NP Moss location. It's two officers because of the hours of operation, but in this particular case, the school board is footing the entire bill for those officers, their training, their salary, their equipment. They're paying 100% of the cost.
And Chief, if you don't mind me interrupting, it'd be the school board's decisions to increase as they wish in regards to a question of how many more we would add. That wouldn't be a council decision, that would be a school board decision, correct?
Well, they make requests, and we determine the need and whether or not we could actually staff it. And originally, their request was for more officers, but once their budget was approved, then those sorts of things, it got narrowed down to two. So that'll give us eight within the Lafayette Police Department, plus the other agencies who participate in the parish.
Thank you, Chief.
Is it okay if I ask him one more question real quick?
Just direct it towards the council, please.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm new at all this. Okay, yeah, just wanted to know if there is any Homeland Security money involved in this resource?
Then that will be a chief craft question. No, not in this resource.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chief. Any other speakers, Ms. Dugah? Anne, please call for the vote.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Approved.
Ordinance 187-2012, an ordinance the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 11-12 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $63,798 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement on Law Enforcement and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Councilman Bertrand. Second by Councilman Ontario. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dugai, any blue cards? And please call for the vote.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Approved. Ordinance 188, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the construction of Fire Station Number 14 a public necessity and authorizes the Lafayette City Parish President to acquire certain immovable properties necessary for said project on an amicable basis.
A motion by Councilman Ontario. A second by Councilman Nakka. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dugai, any blue cards? And please call for the vote.
District eight?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Approved. Ordinance 189, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1112 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $1.5 million in FTA grant funds contained in Grant LA 96X 00400 from '09 Rosa Parks Construction Project to the '09 Bus Replacement Project within the Traffic and Transportation Department for additional funding needed.
A motion by Councilman Bertrand. Second by Councilman Andy Nakka. Seeing no council discussion, Ms. Dugai, any blue cards? And please call for the vote.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
Approved. Ordinance 190, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Lafayette City Parish President to enter into a series of agreements that include a joint cooperative endeavor agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and the Lafayette Metropolitan and Planning Organization, a state sponsor agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and the Louisiana Department of Transportation, and joint cooperative endeavor agreements between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and local entities for stage zero studies for various roundabouts within their relative jurisdictions, and amending the fiscal year 1112 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues received from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and various local jurisdictions appropriating within the Traffic and Transportation Department Planning Division for stage zero studies at various roundabout locations.
A motion by Councilman Bertrand. A second by Councilman Castillo. Councilman Ontario.
Mr. Trammell, if you don't mind, sir, could you give us a brief overview of this and what it entails, sir?
This is probably one of the first truly MPO-type activities that engages both LCG, the MPO, and the other jurisdictions that fall within the MPO area, which include areas outside of Lafayette Parish. So this is a relatively complex process, and on Figure Two, you actually will see how all the pieces fit together to make this happen. This is a stage zero report, which is the very basic reports, which the department requires to determine the cost, the impact, the environmental issues, associate potential roundabouts at some 53 different locations. Ideally, when this report, when these series of reports are finished, we will then be able to come back to you and/or the jurisdiction that's engaged and be able to rank order them and say, here are the highest benefit cost kinds of projects. And hopefully, if we have a large number of them, we'll be able to develop a five-year capital improvements program that will actually identify which ones, which stage, and how we would make this happen. All this still subject to adequate funding. I will point one thing out, though, that is important, and Ms. Toops and I have had some discussions. We do not, at the current time, have identified specifically the local match for Lafayette Consolidated Government, both in the parish as well as in the unincorporated areas. We will be coming back, hopefully, on the very first date of the new budget year and making a request to appropriate some monies and to make some budget adjustments. So I want you to be aware of that, because it's too late now, the budget process, to make those changes right now. So let this go through, but we will be coming back. So when you guys ask me the question, why didn't you do it during the budget process rather than on the first meeting of the new budget, just remember this meeting, because we will be, that will be one of the questions that someone will be asking us in order to make that happen. That's the general summary of what we have.
The study itself, I think there's some funding that's provided for that from DOTD and a couple of other sources, am I correct, just for the study?
Absolutely, yes. The DOT is providing $680,000 towards this. The local share is $170,000, spread out over 10 different jurisdictions. And so, again, it will come together and make all that happen. It's, like I said, trying to pull one off for the first, for the home team to really show how the MPO will really work.
You wouldn't want to guesstimate what the first, what that dollar amount's going to be on the first year of budget.
We need about $50,000 in the city and $50,000 in the unincorporated areas. And we think we've identified some in the potential issues, but that's orders of magnitude. That's correct.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Trammell.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dugai, any blue cards?
Stephanie Skinner.
Skinner.
Hi, council. I wanted to know if this has anything to do with Homeland Security and Department of Transportation, and I just want to know if there's, if any of this money is coming from Homeland Security for our highways and stuff, sir?
Mr. Trammell?
Hi, I'm Stephanie.
The answer is no.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers, Ms. Dugai? And please call for the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
Approved. Ordinance 191, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1112 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues received from the Federal Highway Administration Recreational Trails Program in the amount of $20,000 and appropriating within the Traffic and Transportation Department Planning Division for Phase One of the Atacapa Ashak Trail.
Motion by Councilman Bertrand. Second by Councilman Kevin Nakka. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dugai, any blue cards? And please call for the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Approved.
And please read the announcement of vacancies on boards and commissions.
Due to a resignation, a vacancy exists on the Lafayette Parish Emergency Medical Services Board to fill an unexpired term until February 18, 2013, then a subsequent four-year term. This is a minority appointment. Due to a resignation, a vacancy exists on the Lafayette Planning and Zoning Commission to fill an unexpired term until June 4, 2013. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancy must be a registered voter and must reside in the unincorporated area of Lafayette Parish. Due to a resignation, a vacancy exists on the Industrial Development Board to fill an unexpired term until January 13, 2014. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancy must be a registered voter and a resident of Lafayette Parish. Due to a term expiration, a vacancy will exist on the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a five-year term effective June 30, 2012. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancy must be a registered voter and a resident of the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette. The individual must also be able to prove ownership of property owned within Lafayette Parish. Due to a resignation, a vacancy will exist on the Board of Zoning Adjustment to fill an unexpired term until June 30, 2013. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancy must be a registered voter and a resident of the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette. The individual must also be able to prove ownership of property owned within Lafayette Parish. Acts 472 of the 2008 Louisiana Legislative Session, now codified as Louisiana Revised Statute 42:1124.2.1, requires financial disclosure in certain circumstances. Resumes are to be forwarded to Norma Dugai, Clerk of the Council, PO Box 4017C, Lafayette, Louisiana 70502, no later than noon Tuesday, September 18, with council appointments to be made on October 2, 2012. Consider appointments by the council as a whole to the following boards, commissions. Item 22, appointment to the Cajun Dome Commission for a four-year term effective September 5, 2012. From District 2, Raymond Lalanne, to the Citizens Advisor Commission to the MPO for a four-year term effective September 17, 2012. From the mayors of Brobridge, Carencro, Duson, and Scott, Mr. John Gilbo, to the Citizens Advisor Commission to the MPO for a four-year term effective September 17, 2012. From the area mayors, Mr. James Ponley Jr., to the Lafayette Economic Development for a four-year term effective August 31, 2012. And from the area mayors, Mr. Chad Hanks, to the Lafayette Economic Development Authority for a four-year term effective August 31, 2012.
We will now move to introductory ordinance zoning. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule will be in effect. I need a motion and a second from the council to consider all introductory ordinances in global, both zoning and council. I have a motion by Councilman Castillo. A second by Councilman Bertrand. And please read the titles of these ordinances.
Ordinance 192, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance so as to reclassify the property of Upper Lafayette Development Company, LLC, case number 0N20120016, Coret Farms Development Property Rezoning located generally south of West Pony Mutant Road and west of Interstate Highway 49 from R1C Single and Two-Family Residential BT Transitional Business and GAD Growth Area District 2TND Transitional Neighborhood New Urbanist Development. Ordinance 193, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance so as to assign a zoning classification to property annexed by ordinance 117, 2012, case number 0N20120017, 2623 Cameron Street Annexation located generally north and south of Cameron Street and east of Macon Road. Ordinance 194, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1112 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments to revenue and appropriations estimates. Ordinance 195, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1112 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to adjust amounts for risk management uninsured loss reimbursement to actual. Ordinance 196, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish President to enter into a second intergovernmental contract bound between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and the University of Louisiana at Lafayette concerning the control and operation of the Cajun Dome and the administration thereof by the Cajun Dome Commission and the continued existence of the Cajun Dome Commission pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 33:1332. Ordinance 197, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1112 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the increase of revenues in the amount of $250,000 of funds received from the Lafayette Public Trust Financing Authority and appropriating within the Community Development Department for the First-Time Home Buyers Program. Ordinance 198, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1112 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments to the manning tables and adjust revenue based on actual collections, return contributions from City and Parish General Fund, and increase expense line items within the Office of Community Development Department. Ordinance 199, 2012, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at 167 Champagne Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Linda Marie Williams and Tiffany Nicole Willis, in care of Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
Thank you, Ann. Ms. Dugai, do we have any blue cards on any of the introductory ordinances?
Stephanie Skinner on item number 31.
It's quick and easy. I just want to make sure she was okay and why, what was up with her house, and that's all.
It's an introductory ordinance, and we will have more information come final. If you'd give me one second. There's over 34 non-compliance code violations that are listed in our packet, and that is, from what I can tell, the majority of the reason, and we will have more at final, and the person owning said property can come and speak, just like the person did tonight. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Ann, please call for the vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three? Approved.
This meeting is adjourned.[1728.63]